I am happy to introduce Alexander Dinkin, President of the Institute of World Economy and International Relations from the University of Moscow. I'm happy to give you the floor to introduce Igor Sechin.
Благодарю вас, сеньор Кассиери. Дамы и господа, мы...
Thank you, Mr. Cassieri, ladies and gentlemen. We are now beginning this special session dedicated to a very sensitive, delicate problem that is energy security at a global level. So due to the current situation, all processes in the energy markets that we, they used to function regularly, they are now under great external pressure, an unprecedented one. This, of course, forces us to change our point of view. Therefore, forecasts are very hard to make, but they are important in order to efficiently and effectively analyze things. We need experience, we need professional knowledge, and we need to know these processes very well as they take place on international markets. Understanding these processes in the energy field and in the global economy, this knowledge, this understanding has always been the characteristic of Igor Sechin. Ivan Ivanovich had already warned us against lack of investment, and he had mentioned the risk of a too fast energy transition and highlighted the fact that sanctions would mark the end of these transitions. And we are now seeing that many European countries are reopening coal plants or plants that burn traditional resources. And unfortunately, supply chains for these resources are unbalanced. So what is the long-term view for these markets? I hope that Igor Sechin will be able to give us a view on this point. Thank you. I would surely like to answer. And I would like to start by mentioning a movie that we all know. You are planning, we're asking for an unreal plan, said a character in this movie. Of course, talking after illustrious speakers, especially the organizer of the forum, Mr. Antonio Fallico, they have already said everything I planned to say. So I would like to use the poet Mayakovsky's words. He, 100 years ago, he wrote a few lines dedicated to Baku. If we strongly believe in the future, we we believe that we will always have black blood in the, in Baku. I would like to extend my greeting to all guests and participants of this 15th edition of the Eurasian Economic Forum, which is taking place in Baku this year. We have gathered in this prestigious building on, in a country that is the cradle of the oil industry for Russia and the whole earth. Several important characters and legends were born here. Experts in geology as well. And we have great entrepreneurs and inventors who worked in Baku, creating the oil industry from scratch. Imports, experts from the Caspian region are growing thanks to new technological developments for deep drilling. And this has brought about the creation of a great export center that has been playing an important role since the beginning of this year. As already mentioned before, oil exports have increased by 60%, gas exports 22%. Oil from Azerbaijan is bought by 27 countries. This is a symbolic element. Thirty-nine percent of these exports really go to Italy. As for gas, 51% of it is exported. Azerbaijan aims at doubling the export capacity for the southern corridor for gas. The strategic approach is, is very important. And I would like to thank all of you for participating in this forum here in presence, but also connected online. I'd like to thank the Vice Deputy Prime Minister of the Azerbaijani government, Mr. Mustafayev, and the President of the State Oil Company, the Minister for the Indian Petroleum Natural Gas, and Mr. Andrei Kostin, President and Chairman of the VTB Bank, Rajashri Gupta, who will be taking part in one of the sessions. And I, in particular, I'd like to mention our moderators and thank them. Mr. Dinkin, who is the President of the Institute of World Economy and International Relations, and Mr. Cassieri, who is a representative of the state broadcasting company RAI. I would also like to thank the Minister of the Economy of Azerbaijan, Mr. Jabarov, who was able to organize all of this event in a very short time. And I also like to thank Mr. Fallico, a dear friend, President of the Association Conoscer Eurasia and President of Intesa Rusia. I'd like to thank him for all his efforts that enable us to take part in this forum. And of course, I would also like to thank President, the President of Azerbaijan and the President of the Russian Federation for their support to our work. But before beginning this session, I would like to make a disclaimer first of all, because I am about to express my own personal opinions. And I'd like to start with a quote by the Russian President, who said that today the world is undergoing a very deep change, going into a new period of change and upheaval. These great challenges show that the world is multipolar, and this true multipolarity is the only fundamental condition for further development for the human civilization. So this global change we are undergoing, this earthquake, so to speak, is, is the biggest one we've experienced in the last 100 years. And I would like to draw your attention on the fact that neither the crisis in Ukraine nor the energy problems are the cause of these deep changes. Because this is an objective process whereby a world leader is changing rules arbitrarily whenever the rules are not to its liking. Of course, this world leader would like to keep its hegemony. Of course, if they were to lose this hegemony, they would not be able to further support their own economy and their even existence. Speaking at the University of Stanford, Anthony Blinken, the Secretary of State of the US, recently said, unless we are leaders, one or two things will happen. Either another leader will emerge, which will probably not be a leader to promote American values, or we will have no leader. So there will be an empty space that will be filled by chaos and the law of the jungle. So President Biden yesterday visited the Pentagon and said that the US will keep on fighting for its own, their own leadership through diplomacy and the best armed forces in the world. Consequently, the energy market situation and all the problems in the world, all that we have seen happening at the North Stream pipeline, make sure that there is no more single market, there is high volatility, which is unprecedented. So these trends, we have seen them already, and the future trends that might rise show that each country prefers to act on an impulse, act focusing only on its own interest. But these actions produce a cumulative effect. I would just like to underline something that has already been discussed. Sanctions entail the destruction of corporate rights. It means creating pretext to just give up one's responsibilities within contracts. It means expropriating assets of businesses in the whole countries, which then entails to negate the private property. It means to negate the legal system. The White House memos are verbatim mentioned in courtrooms. And people who are hit by sanctions do not have the right to a lawyer, to a counsel. In Europe, we are seeing that purchases of gas are being centralized, up to 15%. Purchases will happen through a European center, which will be the one deciding who can distribute resources. In the market economy, we used to believe that competition and diversification were the main tools to reduce costs. However, all proposals made by the US are getting crazier and crazier. As soon as the US started talking about a price cap, the Europeans already started working, trying to limit the prices based on the relations with the supplying country. Very significant declaration shows that it's an attack on sovereignty, on sovereign rights of countries on their own resources. Because the just countries who lack resources have more rights to these resources than other countries. The US have no restrictions, undergo no sanction, even though they are taking advantage of this image created by the energy crisis in Europe. The American commodities prices are five times higher than before, while Ursula von der Leyen declares that the cause of the crisis is not the rising cost of hydrocarbons, but the very fact that hydrocarbons are used. In other words, the crisis is due to the fact that energy resources are necessary to guarantee the existence of people. So consumers have all the faults of responsibilities. This shows what is the European energy strategy. But the situation in Ukraine or the COVID are not responsible for the crisis. Whereas irresponsible policies, the speed of the green transition and sanctions against Russia are responsible for all this crisis. Now, the green transition has nothing to do with climate change. The technology needed to guarantee an efficient transition to green energy does not exist yet. Oil and gas are still the basis for world energy. Thirty-six percent of resources are made of coal, and this percentage is actually increasing. And investments in renewable energies have reached an incredible amount, $2.6 trillion. However, these investments have not obtained any results, important results. So alternative sources have increased only by three percentage points. That is the real cause of the lack of investment in the energy sector, according to Goldman Sachs analysts. The existing investment gap amounting to almost $900 million, billion dollars. Should be considered, we need to realize this. There is not enough geological research, according to Eastern Energy. So the extractable resources decreased by almost 9% on a yearly basis. And of that, only 76% that is 1,200 billion barrels will be advantageous from an economic point of view only if the price gets below $50 a barrel. The the reduction in resources has gotten to 52 billion barrels. Whereas in, in the US, there has been a reduction in offshore geological exploration. And all the support for green programs has played an important role in all this. So according to OPEC, in recent years, the availability of gas has been decreasing. In 2021, it reached its lowest level. Gas fields are shrinking. And in 2021, only half of tenders were called. And the reduction brings about inflation and the increase of prices all over the world. The greatest energy businesses in Europe keep reducing investments due to pressure by environmentalists. For example, new investments will be taken away completely by 2025. And any in Italy aims at reducing its investments by 2040. On the other hand, considering the high prices, the ABP was the leader of the green transition, but it's now changed completely. So now the BP, British Petroleum, is now announcing new extractions. But it's already started new investments in its projects in the northern seas and all in those fields that might hold up to 7 billion barrels of oil. So of course, changing this situation is possible. I mentioned BP, but despite the declaration of its board in February, when they said that they would withdraw their capital in Rosneft, from Rosneft, I can say that this decision really hasn't been followed through. Because though, without participating to the operations, BP is still keeping all of its rights as a shadow partner. And I would like to inform our friends in BP. They now have 700 million dividends, and they've already received them in September. And despite the fact that our partners had stopped co-financing our projects, we have increased our extractions by 11 billion cubic meters. To be objective, I would like to say that income, BP's income due to the participation in Rosneft have already reached $37 billion, whereas their investment amounts to $10,000 billion. So they having, they have had a good dividend. Many companies have to face risks when investing. And according to Goldman Sachs, fast investment have increased by 60%. But these projects are very they are not sufficient for everyone, they are highly profitable, but they are not enough for everyone. So in 2021, the international capacity for change decreased by 35 billion tons. They were changed to, they switched to biogas. And according by, according to JP Morgan forecasts, given the global energy deficits in 2022, by 2030, these deficits will increase by sevenfold. So we should actually need $100 million yearly to counteract this. And the CEO of JP Morgan just said that the increase in extraction is fundamental, is crucial for the US from the point of view of independence and economic stability. And he also said that businesses cannot be entrusted to environmentalists because they do not understand the importance of these projects. By 2030, it is said that investments need to increase on average by 20% yearly. Considering an increase in consumptions by 1%, investments need to increase by 30% compared to now. So the Biden administration policies in terms of fossil fuels is not contributing to investment promotion. The White House is asking new supplies to businesses, but the, its political priorities say that demand should shrink in just five years. And for the companies who work on a 30-year span, of course, a five-year moment is impossible. The administration is now planning with a two-week perspective. And I'm not joking, considering that on November 8th, there will be the midterm elections in the US. Of course, the US wanted Saudi Arabia to announce a reduction in extractions at least until the date of the elections. I would like to seize this opportunity to thank our colleagues from Saudi Arabia for their objective analysis and position. And going back to the peculiarities of the US policies, the Finance Minister has postponed the publication of its report on the American budget. And so despite all their measures, we are seeing incredible increase in their deficit in a year. It's reached 435 billions, whereas in 2021, it was 65 billions. So why has the US administration changed so radically their budget policies? Well, there are political reasons.
Most of the deficit is due to credits, to student loans, and it's due to expenses made to buy votes. And also, there's Ukraine, for which they've spent $16 billion. And the $16 billion cover not cash, but mainly war material. In addition to sanctions, well, sanctions are also used to manipulate the global market, and the Fed and the US dollar are used to the same purpose. The US dollar is now the number one reserve currency. Investors have already reduced their investments in US treasuries. The dollar percentage in the World Bank reserves has dropped down to 25%. The US dollar is strengthening, especially in US allied countries. But these countries do not represent the entire world. The greatest economy in Southeast Asia, more often than not, pay in domestic currencies. Central banks are creating new swap lines to consolidate their financial systems, especially in the context of stopping, blocking their resources in, against the background of sanctions against sovereign funds. So this means that countries want to preserve their independence by giving up the dollar, and this is an irreversible process. Zhang Ningguo from the University of Shanghai said that the US arguments, when they say that the dollar is a safe haven, is not true. It's just the armies and technological resources that are now the pillars of the strategy of the United States. I could all paraphrase this sentence by saying that the US, in order to create strategic advantages, use their armed forces. But they're also using the entire credit and financial system. And they are using technological companies. Just think of what is happening to Stalin. He complained to the Pentagon because of missed payments. Read the book, The War of Treasuries. In the beginning, I mentioned Vladimir Putin, who said that the world has changed. Now, I'd like to focus your attention on the fact that the world has changed for everyone, not just for some. It has changed also for the United States. The resources they had in the previous century as issuer of the global currency that allowed them to control the global network and made them believe that they were superpowers. Well, now this resource is getting exhausted. The algorithms of civilization have led to the appearance of new centers of civilizations. We cannot ignore the existence of India anymore or China. We cannot ignore their role and position. The United States continue to use their financial resource, but the effectiveness of the resource is decreasing and weakening more and more. These tactics, this strategy is now being used in the EU. We heard it from Professor Falico as well. The policy of the Fed, however, is now heavily hitting the dollar and the yen. An analyst of Credit Suisse, Mr. Koda, published a report. It's often mentioned without mentioning the author. Well, what does this report highlight? He basically says and highlights the fact that the quantitative easing was used to ensure prosperity, but that time is over. In other words, low-cost energy resources from Russia and low-cost goods from China in a context where Russia left all of its income in dollars abroad, thus financing American deficit has changed. In costs supported by the European Union to protect its consumers has already gone beyond 500 billion euro. And by the end of the year, apparently this amount will reach 1 trillion euro. Another victim of the US policy is Europe. Europe is no longer an independent actor because it's lost the opportunity to diversify its supply. And so we are seeing companies leaving the UA and relocating to the United States. The average inflation in the eurozone is about 11%. Data from the Statistics Institute in Germany tells us instead that in Germany, the price index is 45.8%. This is an historical record since 1949. Now, the fact that inflation hits consumers is not bad in itself. What is disastrous is that this level of inflation erases the competitiveness of businesses. After the capital flee, we've also seen production leaving Europe. Arcelor Metal in France or Tesla and even Volkswagen, the symbol of the automotive industry in Germany. Well, all these companies announced that they are relocating their factories to the United States. And then we have European banks, which are in a pre-crisis status. Credit Suisse has lost 95% of its value. The crisis is now flooding all industries in Europe, paper, metalworking sectors, the chemical sector as well. The metal processing sector has dropped, shrunk by 70%. Nitrogen-based fertilizers companies, some of them have been shut down. Sanctions on Russia is endangering up to 11% of the European GDP, 16 million jobs as well. These this is what is happening and these are the so-called successes of the Europeans. As for corporate credits, in Germany, 40% with securities of the state. In France, 70% of loans are guaranteed by the state. In Italy, 100%. According to experts, real numbers are even higher, but I can't really see how that is possible. Maybe old loans are now securitized by the state. There are new rules telling banks how they should behave, thus channeling investments. Now, this is completely in contrast with the economic system of the past 40 years, where the money mass was controlled through interest rates, which in turn were controlled and managed by central banks through commercial banks. Nowadays, central banks are an appendix of European, Japanese and American governments. In the United States, this process is not that marked yet. And that's probably the reason why the US is growing, is appreciating. But investors are moving away from Japan, for instance, to the US. Anti-Russian sanctions, a couple of words. There's an unprecedented pressure put on Russia, but this is nothing but a catalyzer of processes that are changing our economic time. Excluding Russia from the world economy is an absurd idea. It's an illusion because the size and the role of the Russian economy has traditionally been underestimated. What we sometimes hear in public, namely that the role of Russia is only 2% in terms of the world economy, is not true. If we look at the purchasing power, this percentage goes up to at least 5%. If we also take into account services to advanced countries, this percentage grows to 70%. In terms of basic commodities, Russia represents 15% of the world supply. China is always proposing cooperation to open up new opportunities to the rest of the world. China is building a new economy, which will be of benefit to all countries. Xi Jinping said it during the 20th conference of the Chinese Communist Party, the Congress that recently took place. I think that the decisions of the Congress need to be carefully reviewed and studied. For dozens of years, China was one of the drivers of the world economic development. In the last 20 years, China reached incredible success in terms of technological development, but also in terms of improvement of the well-being of Chinese citizens. According to the results of the 2021, per capita production in China amounted to 60,621 dollars. The index therefore multiplied by eight times. During the 21st Congress, national priorities were set, namely security, total technological sovereignty. All the decisions of the Congress are strategic in nature and they show an integrated approach. I am confident that the implementation of these decisions will ensure a new stage in the development of China in all areas. I respect the position of the Chinese officials, who very openly talk about the most important problems of the country, also when it comes to challenging problems such as the issue of Taiwan. I think that the hysteria around this island is artificially supported and stirred. On August 9th, President Biden signed the so-called Law on Electronic Chips. According to this law, in the United States, the full cycle production of chips will be ensured. At the moment, these ships are imported from Taiwan. Now, this is the real cause by 2027. The forecast is that between subsidies and support and benefits, up to 200 billion dollars will be spent in this field. Building the factories by itself will cost 52 billion dollars. And still I'm talking about chips. So we can assume that this program is a very important pillar to push Taiwan back under the control of China. Secondary sanctions strengthen regional ties. We are focusing on cooperation among growing markets. More and more companies want to consolidate their ties with Russia, India and China. Now, today, we need to achieve the goal of economic interaction. The priorities must be clearing payments. Other countries could be participating in these mechanisms as well. Countries from the BRICS countries and the Eurasian area. So I, and I also would like to add that India, that is showing the highest growth rate, 6% to 8% every year. Well, India is another important player. Modi, the Indian prime minister, has implemented a plan that has now turned India into one of the most important consumers of energy resources. India is aiming at balanced development, according to Modi. Seven horses are taking the carriage of India towards the sky and towards God Ra. The investments in Chinese economy have grown from 15 billion dollars in 2001 up to 80 billion dollars in 2021. In the financial year 2122, the share of Russia was 1.6%. But in April, May this year, this share had already grown to 4%. We are very interested in cooperating with Indian oil companies together. We are working on many projects in Russia, including the Sakhalin One project. Rosneft is the largest Russian investor in the Indian economy. After the strategic decision that led to this move towards the east, the growth of Russian exports to Asian countries, including China, has grown, achieving 80 million tons. We are now working on a project in the North Peninsula of Taimir. And this new project will allow us to cover all the needs of China and the Asian market on the whole. The Vostok Oil Project will reduce the volatility of prices, thus avoiding the growth of pricing that is of no benefit to anyone. In the Vossoik Project, we've been able to confirm the increase of reserves. Now, I think that this can be interesting for someone on the left side of the Yenisei River. Based on the drilling tests, we've found two new sectors with more than 200 tons while on the right bank of the river. Without using fracking, we've discovered 3,400 cubic meters, more or less. We've discovered a sort of a well of oil. There's no water. And this improves the figures in our forecasts. We are now getting ready to drill some pilot drills. But even today, we can already say that by themselves, these two exploration drills have allowed us to review our forecasts, improving our figures from 6.2 to 6.5 billion tons. The operation goes on and I am confident that the potential of this area hasn't been exhausted yet. We are still building the necessary infrastructures. We have already planted the poles. We are building a passage through the Yenisei River. And we are continuing to build the largest terminal that will work with the Vostok Oil Resources. We've drilled 6.9 million cubic meters of soil. This is what we've excavated. We've already built offices and dwellings for more than 5,000 people. We are also going to build a village for 1,000 people. During the summer, During the summer navigation campaign, we transported more than six hundred thousand tons of construction materials, wood and metal. Two hundred and eighty-five thousand tons of these were transported along the north route. So works are going according to schedule. We are happy to cooperate with our SAKAR partners, who participate in this project. Now, we are all aware that the economic killing of Europe is only an attempt from the United States. The new phase will be inevitable. A new relaunch based on new corridors, new projects, and the increasing role of regional areas, and Eurasia will be one of the leaders. Once again, thank you very much for your attention.
Grazie, grazie a Igor Sechin.
Thank you, thank you, Igor Sechin. He mentioned Vladimir Putin's words regarding the current times and the deep and violent change. And today, the Chinese president talks about a world that is neither peaceful nor calm. And this confirms what we have understood in these years, in these recent months, the globalization, as we have understood it so far, will not be seen in the future. So I would like to ask Andrei Kossin, who is a banker and president and chairman of the VTB Bank. How do you see the future of this globalization that, so what, can there be an alternative? What kind of role can banks play in this context, as well as big companies, energy companies, which is the engine of development in the world, the world?
Well, thank you, Alessandro, and thank you, Antonio, even though he, he mentioned that for us, it is strange to see the Eurasian Economic Forum taking place here, even though it's probably more logical for an energy, an oil forum to take place in the cradle of the oil industry. So I was looking for some analogies between the two cities. They are both symbols of the invincible love. Of course, in Verona, we have Romeo and Juliet, and where thousands of people have been going to see the balcony where this tragic love took place. And Baku is a symbol, is not only symbolized by the oil towers. Baku also has a tragic story. When prejudice can be defeated, the, the story tells us about that. Of course, we need to hope for the best. And, well, maybe the world will not be as global, but there will be more mutual understanding, more good feelings and love. And I, I think we all wish for that. So the Eurasian Economic Forum is a specific forum and tackles many different topics. We have been working in Azerbaijan for years, and so it's, well, it's welcome that Azerbaijan is now participating. Of course, we see in our portfolio, we have between fifteen to twenty percent investment in energy. VTP has different investment projects in the energy sector. Last year, our credits amounted to about a trillion rubles. So we have several new projects with our trustworthy partners, and these investments should reach one point three billion rubles, but we have already reached five trillions. And we are seeing the development of the whole of the Russian economy in this. So the development of the largest macro regions, such as the Nor, the Arctic region, the Siberian region, and we are the major suppliers of oil and gas at the global level. In the description for this session, we read that change is fast all over the world. Just a couple of years ago, due to COVID, we really had other things to focus on. We were talking about the end of the gas and oil companies, and this is still current affairs, but it's not as important anymore. We, we are being more cautious in terms of the green, the transition. A few years ago, we were talking about the blockchain, and the same was true for banks, but the world has made its choices. And recent events only this year have confirmed all the risks, all the threats of the global economy. So there are huge risks linked to sanctions. Since twenty fourteen, we have been telling our Western counterparts that sanctions against Russia are a boomerang. And they would reply that it's not a problem for Russia because that's the, a, a big economy, but not the biggest. However, the Russian role is, cannot be denied. Last year, it was thirteen percent for oil and twenty-four percent of gas, for gas in the world. And of course, grain supplies are also important, as well as fertilizers, rare metals. Russia plays an important role in all of these commodities. So not abiding by geopolitical goals, we, we have economic damage because this is a very simple growth model, the Western says so. So we, we want energy resources from Russia, but cheap. When they will be replaced, of course, the competitiveness of Europe will be challenged at those prices. So that should have stopped the Europeans, but they are in a race against themselves. And they keep going on. They're talking about price caps, competitiveness on sanctions on agriculture and the metal sector, all against Russia. As bank traders say, don't try to trick the market, otherwise the market will trick you. So there are a number of dangerous trends. For example, as Sechin was saying, the market of sanctions damage the logistics sector, and it entails a price volatility. And all of these problems can only get worse with the physical risks for physical infrastructures. In this new reality, companies and banks in Russia are restructuring, are looking for new opportunities. Since twenty fourteen, the bank and financial sector in Russia has already undergone a number of changes. So there is a, a new system, a national system for credit cards that are not, under, do not undergo international threats. There is a system for bank transfers and financial communications in Russia, going through protected channels. And these structures enable us to serve all financial processes within the country and for the future also to take them to new markets and new currencies. For the oil and gas sector in Russia, the main priority has two big issues, and Russian banks can help bring about a solution. So first of all, the diversification of the supply geography, the modernization of transport infrastructure and logistics infrastructure. And on the other hand, a number of reliable financial mechanisms. The VTB Bank has longstanding experience in terms of transport roads, ports. Since two thousand and eight, we have invested about a trillion in various currencies. We are also talking about port projects and the renovation and the purchase of port assets for their development and the management of these assets. Another issue is that of increasing the tanker's fleet in Russia and insurance companies because increasing fleets would, of course, require about a trillion rubles more. So we, the banks have a role to play in this kind of investment, and they will keep having this kind of role and importance. As for financial structures, we have two main elements, creation and development of the key elements of the commodity financial markets. So we are talking about stock exchange mechanisms for oil products and for all byproducts, and the organization of oil brands to, for friendly countries, be paid, to be paid in yen and yuan and current, and friendly currencies. And then Rosneft obligations paid in yuan, Rosneft bonds in yuan at the Moscow Stock Exchange. And then the payment with independent challenge, channels for clearing payments, that is one of the bases for the successful transformation of the country in economic terms. Russia is being hit by a record number of sanctions, but Russia is also in favor of going out, getting out of the monopolar polar world, but also in the relations with friendly companies. No other currencies are foreseen, so Russia needs to be patient and needs to focus on reliability and mutual convenience at a trade level. Everything is dynamic, so the, all the states that are not supporting sanctions against Russia were forty-one percent of the trade with Russia. And so just ten years ago, there used to be thirty percent. So giving up dollars and euros for Russia is a, a irreversible process, considering the current trends. Already in the medium term, our partners will be China, the EU countries, African countries, South American countries. And with all of these countries, we are focusing as, as a priority. Of course, today it seems, or it may seem, that it's more usual to work with euros and US dollars, but having frozen, and therefore stolen, a number of Russian deposits, that means that no one can feel protected in this centrally-based global economy. And on the other hand, the fact that the major Russian banks are out of the SWIFT mechanism show that the mechanism itself is unreliable. The importance of national infrastructure and the possibility to use them so, through an alternative channel to, for financial operations abroad is fundamental. And according to the World Monetary Fund, these sanctions actually risk weakening the dollar itself and a part of the global economy. And a part of the global economy will be served by rupees, yuan, and rubles. In the last ten years, in the BRICS countries, two, the local currencies moved it from two to forty percent. So as BRICS grows, the use of these currencies will increase. And according to the WTO, this will be true also for energy or gas supplies. So the payment of yuan between, in yuan, between Russia and China and Saudi Arabia and China, so this is a cyclical market. There are a number of macroeconomic cycles that need to be considered. There is a recession risk in many regions, and the World Bank is talking about a slowing down all the way to thirty percent in a few years. As for developing markets, the increase in energy costs, so the increase of industrial production costs, all of this is called by the economists as the perfect storm. Last, in, in previous years, we had an ideal situation. However, today, we don't have all of the, those funds. We can't just create new, new coins. That's not the solution. The first step to solve all these problems is simple and complex at the same time. We're all living in, on the same planet. We are bound to work together, so we need to find an agreement. We need to go back to a constructive dialogue and mutually respect. So Antonio, to answer your question, the world will not be a global world as we've seen it. So for twenty-five years, I've been going to Davos discussing globalization. Of course, the world will be globalized, but less, more fragmented, even in our bank sector and in the energy sector. But international cooperation will surely need to go on. The, the planet is one, and there are new conditions, new levels, new principles, but this cooperation will have to be rebuilt for sure. Thank you for your attention. Well, thank you very much to Andrei Kossin, president, chairman of the VTB Bank, because after deconstructing the present, he rebuilt a, a view for the future, also with some optimism, but always considering all the change that are irreversible, according to him. We heard Sechin mention India several times, its potential for growth, its importance in all economic processes, its importance in demographic terms, and the speed of, in its energy need with, in order to improve the well-being of almost one billion four hundred thousand million citizens. So I would like to ask our guest, Sri Rajasri Gupta, who is the executive director of ONGC Videsh, will ask him to explain what is ONGC Videsh, will ask him to explain what is the view of his country in the relation with the countries that will provide all of this energy? What is the position of India in this process whereby it is, it needs to fuel its own economic development, but at the same time it is somehow pulled and pushed by, also by the West today?
A very good morning to the respected excellences, ministers, dignitaries, CEOs, delegates, esteemed panelists on the dais and this August gathering. It is indeed a great privilege today to be here for the fifteenth Verona Economic Forum and in this beautiful city of Baku. Thank you for your hospitality. Thank you for having us here. At the outset, I would like to convey the greetings from India, the greetings from ONGC, the premier national oil company of the country. As has been told earlier, India is the fifth largest economy in the world. It has a very steady and healthy growth rate of its GDP and this GDP is fueled by energy. And surprisingly, even today, India consumes only about six percent of the world's energy and it has more than seventeen percent of its population. Our per capita energy requirements, consumption is still one-third of the world average and as the country grows, as the GDP grows, this energy requirement is going to go up. Today, India imports eighty-five percent of its crude oil and about fifty percent of its gas from different partners. The present consumption level is five million barrels and it is projected to grow to more than eleven million barrels by 2040. So the pie of consumption of oil and gas would grow, the percentages may reduce because there is a corresponding focus on renewables. The Honorable Prime Minister in COP26 has set out a target of net zero for India by 2070. Each of our companies are also working on the emissions which are to be reduced in scope one, scope two, scope three. Just to give you a figure of the size of India, on a particular day in India, sixty million consumers visit the retail outlets or the petrol pumps to fill up their vehicles with petrol, diesel or CNG. So it is the ultimate requirement for a company like ONGC to meet the energy security of India, to ensure that the energy is available, affordable and sustainable to the ultimate population of India. And that's why ONGC is structured wherein it explores for oil and gas and energy within India and ONGC Videsh, Videsh in our national language is overseas. So ONGC Overseas, as we may call it, looks for oil and gas outside India. Today, ONGC is an integrated energy company. In the last financial year, its turnover was about seventy billion dollars. We are material presence across the value chain. We consider ourselves one of the unique companies in the world, which is one is to one is to one integrated. When I say one is to one is to one is, we produce about thirty-five, thirty-seven million tons of oil. We refine about thirty-five, thirty-seven million tons of oil and through our more than twenty thousand out, petrol outlets, diesel outlets, we sell about thirty-eight to forty million tons of product. So we are, as you can see, naturally hedged across the value chain in this volatile market. We produce from oil and gas together more than one point two million barrels per day, sixty million tons, sixty to sixty-five every year. And we, in ONGC Videsh or ONGC Overseas, we have presence in fifteen countries, thirty-three projects. We have a presence in this country in Azerbaijan, in the ACG project and the BTC pipeline. We have our three projects in Russia with our partners and we have projects in Latin America, Africa, Middle East with ADNOC. So we are wanting to further grow and diversify our sources. We want to contribute more towards the energy security and reduce the import of energy. So for paramount to us is to acquire oil and gas assets where we get equity oil and gas rights to be evacuation and to be brought to India. One more thing that is very important for India is that as we speak of the energy transition, let us be very clear that transitions haven't been overnight. The last two transitions from biomass to coal took seventy years, from coal to oil and gas took again about sixty, seventy years and oil and gas is still about fifty percent of the energy basket. So transitions don't happen overnight. It will be a series of transition. It needs to be well planned and the solutions will come from the industry itself. These are again my personal beliefs. And the biggest possible tool for sustainable oil and gas industry is probably CCUS, as we say, carbon capture, utilization, storage, sequestration. We are taking up such projects in India with other partners wherein we want to capture the carbon dioxide from the environment and then store it below the surface and even use it for our EOR techniques. We are actually using CO2 for our EOR to boost our recovery from the reservoirs where the CO2 could be a very good stimulant. So ONGC has been very responsible in its operations in the last few years. We continue to believe that oil and gas will play a big role going forward. However, we need to be much more responsible for the coming generations. We have reduced our emissions by more than fifteen percent in the last five years through different use of tools like fugitive methane capture, we dual branded gas engines and the government of India through the, it was just referred, the seven horses as mentioned by our honorable PM. One is that we believe that in this transition which will happen of, out of all the fossil fuels, the biggest contributor or the transition fuel, as we call it, would be gas. And because gas is the much cleaner of the oil, coal and gas, so that is the fuel on which the country is banking on. It has a clear roadmap going forward. The Honorable PM has again said that we need to have four hundred fifty million gigawatt, four hundred fifty gigawatts of renewables and we also need to have gas in the energy basket, up to fifteen percent of our total basket. So the roadmap has five pillars, what the Indian government has been doing is our gas grid is being improved to thirty-four thousand kilometers and it is covering the whole of India. That's number one. Number two, the regasification LNG terminals. So LNG that comes in and needs to be regasified, that was only about, capacity was only about twenty, twenty-five million ton, it has been increased to more than fifty million ton as we speak. CNG, compressed natural gas, that network has also been extended throughout the country through the different bid rounds and now it covers ninety percent of the population of India. So both industries and households can get access to this gas. Fourth is the, Indian government has allowed total free marketing and pricing of any new gas discovered in India. So in onshore or offshore, wherever you find any new gas and you have a development plan, you are free to price and market that gas. And the final thing was very recently, Indian government started the gas exchange. So it's just in the preliminary stage, but different consumers and producers are coming to whether at the gas exchange to sell their products. With these five parameters in place, we do believe that the next few decades would be the gas decade. Oil will continue to play a big part of this and that's why we, as ONGC Videsh, we are looking for our assets in different parts of the world with our partners. We want to consolidate, we want to diversify, we want to have equity oil and gas, we want to be a win-win relationship, we want to win all weather front. And that's where we believe that India with the biggest market in the world is probably the right partner to have in such a situation. As we are speaking at the Eurasian Forum, Eurasia has the largest percentage of the world's population, has the largest percentage of the mineral resources, has a huge capacity of oil and gas industry professionals and energy professionals. So this part of the world has everything and it has complementary needs. Some countries are needing more energy and they need to import, some are exporting. So any growth in this relationship will always be a win-win for all of us. From the company's point of view, if we look at today's world and the new order that is emerging, most of the oil and gas companies, again in my personal opinion, would, over the next two to three years, would like to streamline and optimize their resource portfolio, consolidate and grow, embrace, embrace and develop smart goals for the energy transition, attract, train and retain employees. This is very important, the young generation that's coming out of the colleges, universities, we need to attract, train and retain them and continuously relearn the new techniques. Digitalization will play a very big role in this and that's the way to go forward. We also need to come to terms and be more responsible towards additional environment, social and governance requirement or ESG requirements. So as we say, we have to be purpose driven, tech-enabled, human-powered organization with smart interim goals and progressive communication, disclosure of strategic plans and make it happen. Some of the things that will affect the oil and gas industry going forward would be the high oil prices or more the volatility. So every end consumer needs certainty of what they need to pay for their energy needs. ESG will play a more important role going forward. There will be consolidation in the M&amp;A market as we look at it. Business models will shift to a new energy era which it will not be just vendors and producers, it will be more partnership, sustainable solutions. Convenience and experience would probably super determine the use of energy for the newer generation. They are always harping on their convenience and experience. So that's very important for the oil and gas industry to keep in mind. And workforce and talent retention, retooling, reskilling, relearning would be the way going forward. At the end, I would only like to say that again, thank you for having us here. We look forward to a very fruitful discussion over the next two days. We, as the national oil company of India, we do believe that we need to have more sources of oil and gas and energy from across the world. We need partners. We welcome you to India to have a win-win situation with us and do visit us sometime in India. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Grazie, Mr. Gupta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gupta, and thank you for your invitation to work with India.